You look relaxed.
Oh.
Ready to go.
Yeah.
It's on?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll call the Tremont Planning Board meeting February 27th to order at 6:02 PM. Call, roll call, we have Lawson Wilson, Brett Witham, Beth Gott, Ben Harper, myself, Mark Good, our CEO or Deputy CEO Katie Higgins, and applicant and member of the public. Okay. Do I have to excuse any absences? Minutes, I looked at the minutes, they seemed okay to me, and I'll take a motion to approve unless somebody sees somebody else sees something.
I saw more.
Second? The motion is second on the table to approve the minutes of February 13th as submitted. Any discussion?
Um, I guess.
What? Okay.
No, I'll save it for adoption of agenda.
Which we just bypassed because I didn't think.
Oh, we just skipped that.
What thing on the agendas?
Oh, right, okay. Well, I guess my question is about the things that we requested, and maybe that could go on a CEO issue, we could just, um.
Do you want me to address that now?
Address that later, please.
Okay, great. Then we're good.
The minutes are good?
Minutes are good.
Okay.
They reflect what happened.
Beth, you'll have to abstain, of course, you weren't here, okay. All in favor? Four, nothing. Abstain? Ms. Gott, okay. Uh, new business, pre-application workshop, Lippert Family Land subdivision. Okay, this might seem familiar to some people because we've been here before.
These are all over here.
And, yeah, we have to do that because the timeframe for them to come back to us expired, and it means that we even have to go through another site walk, is my understanding, so. You two, if I remember, weren't here for this.
I, I don't know if I was here for this. I did the site walk. I.
Yeah, that's right, you guys did the site walk.
Yeah.
But I don't know if you were here for the meeting, were you or not?
I don't think I was, because I think I remember going to the site walk, being like, what's going on in here? But by the end of the, by the end of the site walk.
Hopefully, we'll know better this time.
That's right, yeah.
So I do have the larger version of the plans as well?
Yeah, that'd be helpful, I think, for anybody if I want to see it, because, um.
Is it the same as that we've got?
They are, but they're, uh, those ones you have are quite small, you can't see the contour lines.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize this even had contour lines on it until it pointed, I mean, the measurements, the intervals, I should say, until it was pointed out to me that they're very small and you need a microscope or at least a magnifying glass to see it. But there, you can see it on here, they're five-foot intervals, I believe, is that correct?
One foot.
What's that, one foot?
One foot.
Yeah, okay. And, and we require ten-foot intervals, so.
I could have brought that up.
I'm, I'm sorry, Sarah, what's your name?
I'm John Stewart from Pliscan Day, and I'm working with the Lippert family.
Okay.
To put together the plans and the packet and whatever else I can do to help.
Okay.
Questions?
Okay. And Kim, we know Kim, she's here representing the family, I take it.
The contour lines jumped out at me right away, and I was.
Yeah.
Impressed, John, so it's great.
Yeah. But when I saw it on the small plan, I was last night, I'm looking at it, it's like I couldn't see anything.
It's kind of a nice texture.
Yeah, gotcha. You want to explain what's going on here for those of us who weren't here at the last meeting?
Absolutely. Would you like me to speak into a microphone somewhere, or just, could not?
There is one hanging above your head, Sarah, so you're all set?
I'm all set. Great, I'll just sit right here. The Lippert family has had this land over fifty years. Wayne Lippert and his wife accumulated different pieces, put them together, built a new road, put a couple structures, a couple garages exist on the property, and then land's just kind of evolved over time. And more recently, there's been a couple sales out there. Lot number, what's shown is lot number one on the property was the original Lippert camp, and that came up, I think it was a pandemic type era. It worked out that they sold that, sold that lot a little bit later. And then the, the other house lot that used to be, I think it ran there as well, is that correct?
My grandma's.
Your grandmother's house?
My grandmother's house actually sold while my parents' house did.
So I get the timing mixed up. Basically, there's been two sales out there, and now they're looking at the cottage, the cottage lot, which is out on Point, which is lot number two. Peter's, the family's looking to sell that lot, which all of a sudden, when Peter, when they first did these, these sales, I guess they talked to the town, there's a road between them, even though it's a private road, and they said, oh, they're on two different sides so that it didn't trip subdivision at the time. So when Peter came to me this summer, I think he's already talked to you folks a couple of times, and pre-applications kind of started, I said, no, this really kind of, we're getting subdivision here, we've got two lots on one side of the road, there's not a lot over here, you've, you've got multiple garages, you've got things that are going to happen over time, we really need to go through subdivision. So that's what kind of spurred the discussion, and, and spurred what's in front of you right now, is hey, let's clean all this up, let's put it all in the subdivision, even though those two lots, the grandmother's house and the original cottage lot, this town, Ocean's lot one and lot four?
Yep.
Are the two that are already in other, in other parties, so in other words, there's other people that own it right now. And then just show all the wells, show the roads, show the contours, do all the things that the town probably would like to see as, as they move forward, and would like to sell those lots. Peter, it's in a, it's in a family trust, so there's other members of the family besides Peter and Kim, and you have one other sister. And so there's talk of some of these other lots coming with family, or I guess what would be Wayne's grandchildren at some point down the line. So that's, that's why there's multiple lots, not just like three lots.
Okay. Now, when this was first presented to us, I believe in July, we noted that there were structures that were not shown on the, the plan itself, and it seems like, to some extent, you've updated that as per our request the last time?
One exception, lot number one does not have the structure shown.
That's what I was, where I was going with this, too.
And it's not, it's something I can definitely add to the plan if, if that needs to be on the original.
It's part of the subdivision, it should be part of the plan.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But as far as you know, all the other structures, the sheds and everything, that weren't on the original plan are now on this plan?
As far as I know, they are.
Okay. We also noticed on the, the application itself, if you look under land information, from location of property, from tax maps, map oh six, lot forty-six A and lot forty-eight, but there are several other lots, like forty-six B, I believe.
I think I might have missed, missed one or two on that.
So I haven't looked at every single one, but I have noticed that forty-eight A, one and forty-nine are missing from there.
So, so that would need to be amended, too.
Yeah.
Also, on your major plan, we do have, I see you've included the topo map as the ordinance requires as part of that. It's a little different that we get it, but, you know, it's fine, I guess, but there's no approval block. We need an approval block where the members of the planning board can, you're familiar with what I'm talking about, I imagine, okay, yeah, we're filing a registry deeds.
Well, for the final plan, right?
Final plan, yeah.
No, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the plan that you have is kind of a, there was, I guess, a little bit of miscommunication between Peter and I as, as far as what might function at first, it was very light, and just hey, I need a map to sketch to show this, and I said, here's your sketch.
Yep.
In July, you saw.
When you came to us in July, or not you, but when he came to us in July, yes.
Right, and so needless to say, there's been some hoops to jump through, and as he's kind of, I'm not gonna, stumble might be a word, but some of those hoops, I, I've kind of come in to hopefully clean it up and just kind of progress.
Good.
With, with what needs to be done, understanding what your ordinances are, and going through the right, the right information and presenting it. And I thought I had a title block on there. No, I don't, you're right. And it will, it'll probably need to be on both sheets.
Yeah.
For the registry, because they want to have, they want to have, I think I ran into this in March, but they want to see that block on both sheets, so I'll make sure that's.
Yeah, our CEO can say you straight on that, but I believe you're right, I believe. Board members, anything, any questions, other?
So the preliminary worksheet is for, for our use and for discussion, but that's not part of the actual, you don't, I see that you've got like a sheet one of two and two of two, and then there's something called preliminary worksheet.
I think the preliminary is showing just the, the full lots and the two, or just showing the lineup.
And maybe that's, I don't even think that's your drawing, John.
Did I say, look at it?
Yeah, sure, that's WRC's. Oh, and I mean, you worked with Roger?
Oh, yeah, Roger did all the environmental.
So maybe Roger did that.
So the wetlands, yeah, so that's, and there's actually.
Oh, and do the wetlands not, oh, okay.
There should be another one that's bigger, probably, I can figure.
Okay.
Well, that, that's the, right, that's this one.
Our preliminary, okay.
I see, right, and that'll be useful, because it doesn't, it shows the wetlands that are not on this, or.
Yeah, there is a version of that that's not preliminary.
Okay.
And I guess we'll get the long one. But for this meeting.
For this meeting, it's fine.
For the next one, make sure you get a copy of this one.
Okay.
And so maybe, and that would also probably need to.
I think I might have a copy of that.
Yeah, because I, I think it was in the packet, and they're the big ones, actually might be right here at the back.
Yeah.
They're right at the back, so you do already have those.
Great.
Bigger versions.
Okay.
And any road names are noted on here, right? There's no new ones being proposed. Just the Captain's Quarter.
Well, the, the trail, it, it's an interesting question, there is a road on the west side, and it's really, it's really an easement of how you get to the cemetery?
That was the former Captain's Quarters road before they moved it.
Okay. So does the town want to name that? This would be a great opportunity to name that, that road.
Gott's Cemetery Road.
Gott, is that?
Gott's Cemetery.
Whatever you call it, I'm happy to put that right on there in bold letters and.
I don't know how that process works, I mean, there's nine-one-one, but I don't think that would come into play in this, with this road.
Probably refer to Jesse since he's the road commissioner?
Yep.
It, it's technically not in the subdivision, like the road, the boundary line for that is, is the east side of that road, so technically, it's really not in the area of the subdivision, but I, I think if these things are going to get recorded, it's always a good idea to put a name on there, so everybody in the future knows where it is.
What's the process for that? Somebody suggests, suggests a road name and then it has to be approved?
Correct, it does have to be approved. I'm not sure in this situation, because usually it's for a residence that I deal with, so I'm going to have to.
Yeah, yeah, for nine-one-one addressing, yeah, yeah. No addresses at the cemetery, so.
And if someone wants to access the cemetery, that's their right away to get to the cemetery.
That's correct.
God, how big a cemetery is it?
It's not real big, but it's really old, it has a revolutionary war soldier buried there, yeah.
It's a cute. It's a good lot, it's just down the road.
It was part of the cemetery's, the town, Wayne and Frank Gray wrote a, a bill that went to the legislature, giving towns permission to take over abandoned cemeteries that, so they could take care of veterans' graves.
Oh.
Okay, and this was one of the cemeteries. They, and they've done work on it, and the town maintains it now.
Only there are two trees down on it, and you wouldn't be able to get in it.
What's that?
How long have the trees been there? Five or six months? No, they've been down since the last time a crew went in to mow, to mow, so.
You can't get there now?
No. There are two trees.
Two trees down?
Two trees across it, and with the washout, I don't know how, we put a lot of bill and money into maintaining it until the town is supposed to do that over. So there's a washout of the trees. Make sure the town may. And it's not, and it's not flowers.
There's much else we.
Be my husband's flower.
Any more questions, folks? And you know, when we do, we have to schedule a site inspection, but also you guys are going to stake out, if you haven't already, some of the boundaries, is that correct?
The rods were all set today.
Okay.
We're ready.
Brightly, brightly colored, brightly, bright ribbons on them, or?
Right now, they are.
Okay.
They're either hot pink or they're orange, I'm not sure which one the guys used today.
So before we schedule a site visit, anybody else have questions or concerns here? I think we're basically all set with it.
It made sense in July, it's no sense.
Until you come back with your actual application and, and the corrections that we've noted.
So we don't schedule, we wait for the application?
No, with this, it's, it's different with the subdivision review, we have to do it after the pre-application workshop within thirty days.
Oh, okay, we're ready.
It's not like site plan, site plan, it's after we actually find it complete.
I see, but so we can schedule the.
Yeah, we can schedule it now, and by my fingers and toes, thirty days from now would be March twenty-eighth, I believe.
I believe you're correct.
And I would suggest Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday afternoon, because that's when our code enforcement people are in, so they can come and.
I didn't accommodate.
Do we do it on our Tuesday at like five o'clock before our six o'clock meeting?
What time's it get dark now?
After?
It gets, it's dark.
We're moving ahead, right, in two weeks?
Yeah.
Does that publish a hurry?
I mean, walking, this is going to take a while.
Bring it here, you lose it now.
Yeah. I just fear that if we do it later, that much later in the day, then we might not be able to see everything.
What's the purpose of going out there again versus the first time we went out? What are we learning now different?
We're not.
You know, frankly, we're not going to learn hardly anything.
I don't know I'm sure I'm going to go, but for sure, because it'll take me a while.
We're not allowed to.
The reason, the only reason we have to do it is because here it says we have to.
Okay.
And there's no way we can waive that, right?
It is not one of the things that's allowed to be waived.
So as long as three of us go, like, how?
Only, actually, only two of us have to go, yeah, which is odd, there should be.
Not it?
It should be three.
Not it, yeah, right.
Since Beth didn't go the last time.
I can go, I can go any day but Monday. I can't go on a Monday, but I can go any other day.
So the sun sets at six-thirty on March twelfth. I say that we meet five o'clock on March twelfth.
It's too late, it's too late for us, we have a public hearing that night, and I want to get back for the public hearing on time.
All right, six o'clock AM.
Now you're really pushing.
Then I can, then I can do it, six o'clock AM, and we'll do it before work.
No chance I'll be there at six AM? Zero chance.
How about another night?
That would work.
Rather than the meeting night?
Any day is good, but I'd rather have it during the day than.
Right, I mean, I, about quarter after five, I was out with the dogs, and we didn't see much, even though it was kind of light.
But we waited two weeks, that takes.
I didn't eat my headlamp, but it's still pretty dark.
Well, I'm going to die by the cat, that has, it's on a schedule, so anything, in fact, I thought she was actually out, I was going to be late, I'd let her in, I had forgotten it so, but she'd had her insulin, but, so anything between five and six time, it kind of kills it for me, six is fine, but anything before that.
But, yeah, it's too late, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, even with the time change, okay, it'll be an hour earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Do you want me to keep suggesting times, or someone else want to?
Well, you know, we only, we only, we only need two of us.
Great.
And I.
Do it when you want to do it.
Perfectly understand why somebody may not want to do this again.
Well, yeah.
So.
Unless you get paid by the hour.
Well, it seems to me like you don't have to be as detailed as you were the first time, a walk is.
I'll volunteer, okay? Now, that's, somebody else want to volunteer? And we'll do it like at three in the afternoon on a.
No fun.
Okay.
Pick a date.
What's, March twenty-eighth is the lot, thirty days.
Do you want to do it before the twelve?
What's that?
Do you want to do it before the twelve? Before the next?
Well, next meeting.
I don't even know if you could, folks will even be ready.
I've already, this, I've already submitted the preliminary application.
I've already got it upstairs.
But you have to include things that you, we've talked about.
Not much.
What's that?
Not much.
Okay, you can do that then, okay.
And I could go tomorrow.
So am I safe to assume it's Mark and Ben that are going?
Yeah.
Okay. What's next Tuesday?
I can make any day work if it's Monday or.
The fifth, and we don't have a meeting the fifth. You want to do it Tuesday, the fifth?
Yep.
Three o'clock?
Three PM, yep, that's all right.
Does that work for you guys?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll let you know, I, I am going to have one of those places taken off, so if I step away then again, you're not going to get excited.
Don't worry, I got you, I got you.
Take the first aid kit, make sure.
I've always got Band-Aids in the car.
My goodness, you, you were there for that.
Nope. I heard, but I was.
Yeah, that was, that was the most exciting one we've ever had, okay. And if anybody else wants to show up, feel free.
It's a micrometer.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to schedule the site visit for the Lippert subdivision, Tuesday, three PM, March fifth.
I'll second.
No, no, I need a motion.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, most of the second on the table, any discussion? Hearing done, okay, all in favor? Okay, says the guy, says, oh, I go. Is that good to you? Okay.
For some reason, one of you can, I can't. Do you want to meet at the first?
Pardon?
You want to meet at the first two-bay garage that you did report, so there's.
Meet at the garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yep.
Like we did the last time.
Correct. You're going to have to show me where to go, because I was on there.
Okay.
Please and thank you.
Wait, you got a plan here?
Where it says double bay garage.
I can get there, I just thought you might help me.
Okay. You're all set then, thank you.
I, I am, and if you do need help to get there, there are latitude and longitude on the focus map that you can put into your.
GPS.
I know where it is.
I've been there several times, so. Okay.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
CEO issues, did you want to?
So the reason none of that was included in your packet is because Jesse asked me to wait. Tom B came in and spoke with Jesse about everything you guys had asked for previously, and she wasn't prepared to be ready for this meeting, so Jesse had asked me to table the solar until the next meeting.
That's also tabling the ladies' ordinance changes?
We've already approved.
We're already done?
Right, and so we request a copy of the changes that are going to be available to the public, that the public's going to be commenting on at a public hearing on the twelfth.
Okay, my apologies, I did not honestly remember to print that for you. I had lumped it in with the rest of it, I apologize.
Two different things, yeah.
I understand that much, it's my.
Um, and, you know, it'll be fine, it's just that the twelve, well, I don't know. I don't expect a lot of people to comment on the twelve, but.
I can go upstairs and bring it for you right now.
Well, I don't need it as much, but will the public have access to that ahead of time?
I've got to ask Jesse how that's going to work.
Okay.
Because I haven't done this yet.
You see, they, they print out a few copies, you.
And like leave them upstairs?
Well, they are on this table here.
The table, so like people would come in, and that might be the first time they're seeing the.
Correct.
Seeing the changes.
I assume if, because it's been notified that we're going to have a public hearing, I assume if somebody wanted to come in there, can come look at the changes, we can print it out then, but I can make sure it's available to the public.
This is the application.
I was told not to print a whole bunch of them, just because it's ninety pages.
Well, that's the whole ordinance. Can't, can't you just?
There's pages.
Do the changes?
Throughout it, so Jesse said that I should probably print the whole thing.
You won't have the context, I mean, you won't.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, with you guys, you've seen the ordinance before, you know, this is under the Harbor Shore land, this is under.
Yeah, you skipped the page, you know, from eighty to sixty-four. Very hard to read.
If you would like that, I can go print it tonight, that's completely my fault.
I don't, yeah, I don't feel like I need a copy, because I've been part of the process, I just want the public to have a copy, and I would like to be able to see what the public is seeing, I guess that's what I was asking for last time. So I don't think you should go print ninety pages tonight while we wait, but I do think that you should do that, I can pick it up, you know, and I think you should.
I can make sure it's ready for you tomorrow.
And have a copy like upstairs available for members of the public to come flip through ahead of time, because I think it's also a lot to ask of the public to come into a public mirrors meeting and look through a ninety-page.
Is there something like posted on the website?
I can ask.
It is posted on the website.
I mean, I was thinking, then some could call, and you could say, we have posted it on our website, and.
That'd be, that'd be awesome.
Post it on the website along with a notice, you know?
Right, and then Lawson and everybody else can just go to the website, see the same thing.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
I don't think it's out of turn for me to share the conversation we had at the Sustainability Committee meeting last time, in which. The Sustainability Committee, which is also working with Tom B, I guess this sort of suggestion came up, and I think this came from Jesse, to have the Sustainability Committee do the legwork on drafting a solar ordinance with Tom B, do the research, and then have that committee come to the planning board with a sort of educational presentation, as opposed to asking us to do it. I think if the planning board wants to do it, we can do it. We could both do it with the Sustainability, we could collaborate with Sustainability Committee.
How often do they meet?
They meet monthly, and so that's part of the challenges, like, at our last planning board meeting, we had, I had not met with Sustainability Committee, then we met like two days later, anyway, so it's a little bit out of sync, but if we're not in a hurry for the solar ordinance.
So what does the Sustainability Committee do?
So it's appointed by the Select Board to advise the town on a range of things. It came out of a request, a sort of citizen request a couple of years ago, that then appointed it, and the major thing that we've been doing for the last year or so is working with Climate Thrive and Island Institute on the Community Resilience Plan, which there's which there's a public forum for on Tuesday, and that includes lots of things about sea level rise and renewable energy and other things too. And there are people on the sustainability committee, also Sarah's the chair, so I should like, I'm talking about it as well, but that's Sarah White, who's the chair of the sustainability committee, who's at her meeting, again. And anyway, Kevin Bux, this is the representative from the select board. There are a couple of other townspeople on it. And I would say that like, the sustainability committee has the bandwidth and the sort of interest to do for research and like to read the other ordinances and try to compare, and I serve on it as well as this, and so I can sort of help translate some of the conversations that we've been having and put into land use ordinance language.
Just to add to that, the select board actually voted on Climate to Thrive's support of producing or creating like a sustainability plan for Tremont, which isn't the same as the comprehensive plan, but there's some some kind of working together, but sort of in a little different focus. So it's they've accessed many grants, well, not many grants, but enough grants that all the work that I know Tombe is doing and other people at Climate to Thrive, that we're sort of working hand in glove with them, it's at no expense to the town. And it's helping to plan us forward and find ways, for example, the last couple storms we had, that really upset properties and the wharf and things like that. These are plans to help support that not being an upsetting situation if and when these storms occur in the future, which the data shows people will, so it's, it's that and more.
Yeah.
Like there's, I guess with some of the, there's the concern of what saltwater intrusion, some of the wells that are now happening in islands, that are getting a whole lot of, you know, force by the incoming storms and tides, and it's just knowing what's coming, helping the town to be prepared.
Okay.
Mark, how do you feel about Will asking for support from Becker?
I thought we were getting support from Climate to Thrive, I mean, I
We are.
I had originally thought that they were gonna, their grant wasn't going to expire in May, but we found out it's, it's May of next year.
Yeah.
It's May of next year, so we did find that out. I, I thought the grant, part of the grant was to help the planning board develop these standards, not the sustainability committee. And who knows the ordinance better sustainability committee or the planning board, I.
Definitely the planning board.
And I, and the other thing is, I think we have to be very careful, because we've got the comprehensive plan itself. Okay, if that passes, we, we should be considering that in any decisions we make about some of these large commercial ventures.
The large solar ventures?
Yeah, commercial, yeah, 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 what we're calling industrial, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was it's much different than, it's a small scale on somebody's house or in the yard.
Right, whatever the ordinances should be aligned with the comp plan.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and we have plenty of time to do this, I, you know, I don't know, I.
Katie, did you have a chance, and I know you're extremely busy, but I'm watching the last meeting, they Brennan mentioned something about Hancock's.
So, I do have a copy for myself, the reason I didn't include it is because Jesse asked me to table solar.
Solar, yeah.
So, yeah.
But did you get any other towns, other than Hancock's?
I've, it's been a pain, it's been awful. So, some of these towns have not a section about this. Some of it's thrown in with certain sections, I mean, it's, I've looked at probably thirty plus towns, I've found some, I've found some that are what you were asking for, longer versions of things, but it's I can't, you asked for Barton Harpers, please feel free to find it. Because it is so hard to look through that charter.
Ellsworth has a moratorium now on them.
Do that.
Yeah.
So I've been trying to find things that would be kind of comparable towns to what we have here, but also what you all have asked for as well, so I have found, I have Trenton, I have Hancock, I have, I don't remember, I have a few, I have three or four already, but some of them are shorter, which is not what you all have asked for.
Right.
So I'm still trying to find things that are comparable to what everybody has asked for.
Yeah, I want to read Hancock's was one I wanted to read.
It's very similar to, because I took a lot of it from theirs, because it's a similar to what you were kind of talking about at the time.
Probably this wouldn't go before voters until next spring meeting, okay, it's the way Jesse's looking at it. There might be a chance that we got something that'd be the November ballots, but, you know, who knows, so we got plenty of time to work on this.
I can scan them and email them to you if you'd like.
Oh, I can, I can go on, it's, I had tried to watch the last meeting a couple of times, and I couldn't find it, and when I came in to get my packet, I mentioned it to Jesse that, and he goes like.
Is it on there?
I thought I posted it, and I went right on today, and it was like right there, so I don't know if he'd forgotten to post it, or.
He came down two days after the meeting?
Yeah, today it popped right up, so, and so I did.
That's the second one we've had trouble with.
But it came right up today, when I plugged it in for, you know, and it, so, and I was able to watch the whole thing with no problem. But yesterday I tried, and then a couple of days after the last meeting, I went online to try to watch it, and I couldn't find it.
Because I had watched him come down here to do it, and he said it was all posted.
Yep, that's what he said.
We had an issue with another one as well, so I don't know.
But I've watched it, so it's.
Okay, I can, I mean, I can scan those in tomorrow and email them to you if you'd like.
I can go on just as easy.
So to answer your question.
Side track.
I'm concerned that could just complicate things even more, you know, it's just too many people getting involved, the two separate groups, okay? I don't know what anybody else feels, it's my opinion.
Can I just offer that that would not be our, we wouldn't want to complicate, so if, if that ends up being something like that, then we, we don't have a stake in anything other than wanting to support Tremont any way we can, so I'm, I know the committee will be fine with whatever.
But what he's suggesting is that you guys develop solar ordinance for these large scale commercial things, and, and bring it to us.
The reason is, is that Jesse brought that up to me, and suggested it might take something off your plate, because you guys have huge things you're dealing with, that are boots on the ground now stuff. And so, because I'm, you know, new to being chair of the committee, I'm meeting with Jesse on and off just to get my boots on the ground and going forward, though I've attained, attended the sustainability committee meetings for almost a year now, I guess, but anyway, what I'm saying is, I think Jesse suggested it might take something off your plate, and if it ends up not being like that idea, then we don't want to complicate it.
Yeah.
So we're totally good with whatever you all and Jesse come up with.
I think it would just muddy the waters too much, if, I think I would stay with the planning board.
Other thoughts? Beth, Brett?
You're just sitting like them.
I'm ill at will. I, I do think that what my natural reaction would be, if someone else is gonna do it, I'm not gonna pay attention to it anymore, and I'm just gonna take whatever they give me and say, okay, that, I mean, that, which maybe that's okay, maybe it isn't, I feel like, I, I do feel like it's kind of our job. But I don't, but I, I'm not saying I wouldn't care, I mean, I wouldn't mind either, if it was a good one. I mean, make it easier, take it to our table, but then we, you know, we still have to go look at it and say, well, maybe change this and that sort of thing, I, I don't know, I, I tend to think like you, it's our job.
We don't have to make a decision tonight, do we?
Where do we leave it with, um,
Bobby?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, apparently there, she met with Jesse, and he mentioned some of our concerns, and I believe she's actually gonna work with some other people at Climate to Thrive to help develop some standards, so we already got that going in process, that's already a process, plus any other things that we come up with in the meantime. We do have to get through our public hearings and, and town meeting stuff. And then we know some people terms will be up, they might not have to deal with this at all.
Maybe, is that true?
No, no.
I thought you weren't gonna get done.
Me?
No, well, no.
Oh, him?
Him.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not up.
Right.
Am I him?
You are.
He is, and, and Lawson both.
I can't, you know, it's, you've got to pass it on, you can't just do this forever, you know, it's.
You can do it for a long, a little while.
Well, we'll talk into, talk him into it some other time.
I mean, it's totally up to you guys, but.
It is his life.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
So, it just, it seems like I should let, or Sarah and I should go back to the sustainability committee and let us, let them know that like, the sustainability committee should not be focusing their energy on working and supporting Tombe and helping her generate, or do her the research and.
So she would be helping us and also helping sustainability committee to do the same thing?
No, sustainability committee and Tombe are only interested in helping the planning board. So then the question for the planning board is what help do we want, and who do we want to ask for that help?
And, and also just to say that Tombe and the, to say, we work hand in glove with a lot of the things she's doing. I think that's part of that.
Yeah.
That's just, we're.
And there are other things that we can be working on with Tombe, other than this solar, if the planning board doesn't want, doesn't want you know, the sustainability committee working on an ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, it's not her sole purpose there.
That's right.
Yeah.
But if the planning board would like sort of additional eyes, additional research, you know, some sort of more guidance so that we aren't the planning board doesn't, doesn't have to sort of sit through all thirty ordinances, but we, the sustainability committee could identify the three most useful ordinances, and share those with the planning board. If we think it would be useful.
But if that would be helpful.
Wouldn't that be helpful, right?
Yes.
I, I think, I think it would be very helpful, as a planning board member, if we had some other committee show up and say, alright, here are three great ordinances, we took this piece and this piece and this piece from these different ordinances, and this is why. And then the planning board can decide if we agree or not, and maybe the sustainability committee and Tombe would present some options, like, okay, like, when it comes to size, like, most towns say five thousand square feet, but you guys might want to think about twenty-five hundred, I don't know what the actual numbers are, but could sort of give us a framework for that conversation.
Remember, this is only focused on industrial solar. Has nothing to do with the rooftop or the ground mounted, we've already decided that, that's going to the voters in May.
I didn't know that, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You all motioned and agreed upon.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, that's.
Was I here for that?
Yeah, yes.
All right, good idea. So it's only for the industrial, that's all we're talking about?
Yeah. Why should we, we've already been through the whole process with the other ones, it's going to voters.
Does anyone want industrial?
Huh?
Oh, forget it, no, no.
Then the industrials know, because, because we don't have any standards for it. And we need to develop some standards.
Does Versifig have any timeframe on when they would be available? To use this power from.
The grid needs updated, and when we met with Climate to Thrive last summer, basically, they said it's not gonna be updated enough to allow these large scale sort of things anytime in the near future, I don't remember, I don't think they gave an exact timeframe, it was quite a bit.
I, I guess I was confused, because the last document we're, we're looking at from Tombe had
Yeah, she had, she.
Not just the industrial, it was all the different sizes, and.
Right, yeah, yeah, but she was only asked to do the one thing, she, she, because, I mean,
And then our draft has.
Frankly copy and paste it from the Audubon, that's Audubon stuff.
Okay, I don't want to get that, I don't want to get that, don't go there. I don't want to get, but then I thought our draft also had the other different sizes too, but we're, we're, okay, I'm sorry, maybe I just.
But we had already, you weren't at that meeting when we sent that on to voters.
Oh.
We approved that.
Two weeks ago, we voted on the draft, on the changes to the land use ordinance.
Right.
Yeah, we did, yes we did, yeah, okay.
And, that defined industrial, commercial, and residential.
I think the reason she drafted everything, I think it's part of the grant. She's supposed to draft an ordinance, not just.
I, I don't know.
Specifically.
I didn't know.
I did.
There were any restraints, I thought she was just supposed to help us, so, anyway.
I think it's part of the grant, is why she did that.
Well, so that's a pretty narrow, that's a pretty narrow.
And that seems a narrow one that I've heard you say before, Mark.
I mean, we know, we know site plan review has to be tripped with that.
Yeah.
There's, but there's other things, like decommissioning, we need that in there. Fencing, proper fencing to protect little kids from going in and getting electrocuted or whatever.
I would just be, I'd just be shocked to have a, it would be shocking to me to have an industrial sized solar on M D I.
I'd just say no.
I hope it's crazy.
We already have.
You got a park? That was a mistake, that was a mistake. They snuck it in before they had an ordinance there, I think, I think it's crazy.
The Bar Harbor one went in after the ordinance passed, because the ordinance passed.
Yeah, I think it's crazy to have something like that on M D I, personally, but, so that's my, that's how I vote, every single time.
You said no.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, it really. I just think it has no place on M D I.
It really raises the question, when I brought up the comprehensive plan, what's one of the major goals of comprehensive plan? Affordable housing and housing, so if we take a developable piece of land, what's the highest and best use, is it for housing? Or is it for a solar farm? Yeah, I, I.
I don't know.
Especially since I, I consider, what's the advantage of having a solar farm, okay?
I mean, people are upset about the hygiene. People didn't want to look at a campground, which is mostly kind of looks like trees and woods and stuff. And they keep telling me people are gonna be okay with it, like a, like a solar farm.
They're quieter.
Yeah, they're like, they don't, they don't pee in your backyard.
Going to the backyard, they're.
But the erosion can wipe away your yard.
I know, that's my view, but anyway.
So, you know, to me, the advantage of one of those is like, somebody that can't put it on their roof or in their yard can buy into one of these things and whatever, but I can do that now, and we don't have anything here, right? So, this is a little bit of nibby, not in my backyard stuff, but.
It's a national park, I don't know, it's kind of weird.
May I make an observation?
Yeah.
Most of you are against the industrial completely, why are we even considering it?
I don't.
I think it should go to the voters to decide, not the planning board.
Right, no.
I, I think we develop standards for that and put it alone to voters, and let them make the decision.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
The way our ordinance is written right now, solar is not prohibited.
Correct.
And with the changes that we've sent to the select board last two weeks ago, large scale arrays with, you know, intended to reduce offsite consumption, would not be allowed. I'm not quite sure how you regulate that, but that's a different thing. So if th- those changes were to be approved, and we could figure out how to regulate where power is being used, then the large scale would become prohibited for the first time in Tremont. I think that the important, like, but the value of a solar ordinance, like a version or, you know, a revised version that Tombe drafted, or that Mark's alluding to, that has more details about like what actually would work, and we could get specific about the kinds of solar arrays we do want, the sizes that we do want, and the conditions, and like, that might be, we might treat them a little bit differently than we treat buildings and parking lots, which are already in our ordinance, we might have different performance standards for a solar field. One of them might be a size where we don't want anything larger than, I don't know what the number is, but attendance court or two, or soccer, soccer field, or, I don't know, I don't know what that, that range is that we decide we do feel like is okay. Our ordinance doesn't have that level of detail right now. I think there's opportunity, and there's been expressed interest at the planning board level to have that level of detail. I think the process of developing that detail is something that we're in the midst of, but haven't yet gotten a lot of momentum on, and I think we could, and I think that like, a next step would be to either review other towns ordinances as a planning board, or to ask some other entity to review those ordinances, and sort of prepare a click notes version, or a summary, an executive summary that does the legwork, saves us some time, and helps us digest what Ken, what you've realized the last two weeks is actually a pretty complicated industry, and both the industry is complicated and regulation of the industry is complicated, which is why we should ask a consultant and or a special committee in the town for help. That's my recommendation, or that's my pitch. If we don't want to regulate it, or aren't interested in it, or if we do, and we want to do that legwork ourselves, those are also other options for the planning board. That's how I see it. But if I'm not convincing any of the other planning board members, then I'm just like the weird guy at the end of the table. I'll just be the weird guy down here, and let the planning board, the rest of the, like, then somebody else should make a suggestion about what to do next.
Look, we're not gonna be throwing anything regularly, okay, we know. Look, we're not gonna be doing anything regularly, okay? We know Jesse wants us to wait a little bit and we have to gather some information. So why don't we, you know, let's just deal with it ourselves and if we need help, we'll ask them. How's that? Does that make sense?
It does, and I think Sarah and I can go back to sustainability committee and.
Okay, yeah, okay.
You've got a lot to do. And Jesse also said it can take a year if there's, there's time.
Right.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's not gonna go before voters until next twenty twenty-five town meeting. Okay.
Should this be something to be voted upon?
I don't think so. Okay. Anything else? A reminder, we get that public hearing at our March twelfth meeting, the next meeting. And we need to set the date for that next meeting. I'll take a motion to do so, March twelfth.
March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, for the next meeting.
Do you have a second? What's it?
March twenty-four?
March twelve. Twenty twenty-four, I think you said.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion, the second on the table, schedule our next meeting for March twelfth, six o'clock right here. All in favor? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn at six fifty-seven?
So move.
Six fifty-eight, what is it? Fifty-three.
Yeah, fifty-three. What are you?
I gotta check, set my watch, I think. Okay.
Well, you started setting your hand down.
Okay, we had a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Okay, thank you, books.
We'll do the hour, we'll watch, do a little, do a little bit each week.
Daniel, get home in time to watch Oak Island.
Oak Island.
The Celtics are on tonight.